Uton County Board of Supervisors met in a recess meeting on the 21st day of January 2021 at 9:00 AM in their board room in Uton County Courthouse. Steve Seale voiced opening prayer. Present for meeting included the following: Jackie Johnson, President of the Board, Kenneth Harris, Vice President, Joe Alexander, Charles Mose and Charles Gollum. George Hayes, Clerk of the Board, Steve Seale County Administrator, Jason Mangum, Board Attorney were also present. Joe Alexander made a motion. Charles Mose voiced second motion to accept the minutes of January 4, 2021 with corrections. The motion carried unanimously. Sheriff Joe DePinnington advised the Board there had been a shortage of $2,000 in Barry Roberts guaranteed salaries under the 7K coefficient plan of the year 2020 and requested the Board to approve paying the shortage. Joe Alexander made a motion. Kenneth Harris voiced second motion to approve $2,000 paid by Barry Roberts, Sheriff's Department employee for shortage, and 2021 guaranteed salaries. Motion carried unanimously. Of the sheriff discussed progress in construction of building for the Department of Robbie Robinson, EMA Director.
Richardson. Would you please get that back, more?
What did I say?
Robinson.
Robinson. EMA Director gave an update on EMA operations in Uton.
I didn't hear what you said. What is it?
It's Richardson.
Not in my minutes. How you spell that?
Richard.
EMA Director will be in charge of checking generators in Sheriff Welfare Courthouse in Show Barn for fuel in Los Angeles. Noted care med gave update on ambulance service in Uton County. Brian Taylor, Uton County Fire Coordinator, Alyssa Middleton Dispatch Director met with the Board concerning aging equipment with the dispatch office. Mr. Taylor asked for an extension to the January 30 deadline for the fire departments to have spent their radio money or return to the county as invoices for all radios have not been received for payment. Joe Alexander made a motion. Charles Mose voiced second motion to extend the time to the end of February 2021. Motion carried unanimously. Employee changes: Pam Jordan, Uton County Sheriff's Office, 30,000 annually; Bowley Stuckes, Uton County Sheriff's Office, 40,000 guaranteed; Regina Matt, Uton County Sheriff's Office, 1280 an hour; Jonathan Cortez, Uton County Sheriff's Office, 1079 an hour; Thomas Gregory, Uton County Sheriff's Office, 1079 an hour; Martha Blaylock, Uton County Sheriff's Office, 1614 an hour; Jason Jones, Uton County Sheriff's Office, 1125 an hour; Ryan Hunter, Uton County Sheriff's Office, 1247 an hour; Amy Johnson, Uton County Sheriff's Office, 1268 an hour; Thelma Evans, Uton County Sheriff's Office, $20.81 an hour; Kyle Lamar, Uton County Sheriff's Office, 1143 an hour; Stephen Kelly, Uton County Sheriff's Office, terminated January 12, 2021, Page 2. Jackie Johnson made a motion. Joe Alexander voiced second motion to approve contract with Trax Plus and to sell road operator and mini excavator property of Big Five through auction times and authorize the Board President to sign contract. Motion carried unanimously. Jasper County Ambulance Dispatch discussed. Alyssa Middleton Dispatch Director from Uton County discussed request from Jasper County. When Uton County could dispatch care med ambulance for Jasper County, the Board asked Board Attorney, call Jasper County Board Attorney and see if it was agreeable with Jasper County, with the Jasper County Board of Supervisors. Now, the extension building grant expires September 2021. Kenneth Harris made a motion. Jackie Johnson voiced second motion to declare surplus. Declare a surplus property of Big One, the used fuel tank, number 154774, used flail mower, Big Four, a used... Was that fuel tank yours, Kenny?
Yes, the water tank.
Okay, water, okay, water. Used flail mower, Big Four, used... We'll get this right in a minute. A used flail mower, Big Four, used rotary tiller, a one-ton Chevrolet truck, 5441, rhino cutter, a used landscape blade, one... Should be 154 also. 2960 and a three-point hitched disc and sell through Paulinworth Auction. Motion carried unanimously. Kenny Harris made a motion. Charles Gollum voiced second motion to declare all used scrap clothes, the scrap and take bids for the same. Bid be open on February 1, 2021. Purchased clerk to alert scrap metal dealers. Motion carried unanimously. Bid opening season vehicle, one bid was received, seized Maserati for the Sheriff's Department. Reserve bid price had been reduced to $18,000 by the sheriff at the previous court meeting. Jimmy Nowell bid $18,000 for one used and seized Maserati property of Uton County Sheriff's Department. Kenneth Harris made a motion. Joe Alexander voiced second motion to accept Jimmy Nowell bid of $18,000 for the Maserati. Motion carried unanimously. Joe Alexander made a motion to close the meeting and see if executive session on personnel was necessary. The room was closed except for the Board, Board Attorney, County Administrator and Chancellor Clerk, Marty Stevens, Landfill Manager and Richard Woodham. Assistant Landfill Manager were invited into the meeting. George Hayes left the meeting. Charles Gollum made a motion. Joe Alexander voiced second motion to come out of executive session with no action taken. Motion carried unanimously. Page 3. Line K. Smith Purchase Clerk was to receive $2,000 annual payment upon passing certification report. Purchase Clerk, Ms. Smith, passing exam. Purchase Clerk, Charles Gollum made a motion. Joe Alexander voiced second motion to raise Line K Smith's salary, $2,000 per year as she completed certification exam for purchase clerk. Motion carried unanimously. This to take effect immediately. Now, the Charles Mose left the meeting. Reverse auction bid accepted for mini excavator. Joe Alexander made a motion. Kenneth Harris voiced second motion to accept the results of the mini excavator reverse auction bid of $89,000 for a Sandy mini excavator from Trax Plus and accept their trade-in allowance of $48,000 for the county's Sandy SY75C mini excavator, inventory number 1523000. Motion carried unanimously. Special docket approved. Joe Alexander made a motion. Kenneth Harris voiced the second motion to authorize a special docket for Big Two Road for $12,136.48 to Banningport South, payoff Sandy excavator being traded and to pay Trax Plus $10,000 from Big Two Road for the new mini excavator and $49,058.08 from Trax Plus from Big Three, Bonfanti and Boycheck. $13,1295 to Rita Brown or $99501 and replaced with $248.75 from General Farm. Motion carried unanimously. Folks were financing mini excavator. Joe Alexander made a motion. Kenneth Harris voiced second motion to take. Least purchase quotes to finance $31,000 for three years for the new Sandy mini excavator for Big Two and allow the County Administrator to accept the lowest closing for the Board President to sign the financing papers. Motion carried unanimously. Noted delinquent justice court fines collected for the month of December 21, 20 through 12021 were $1,060.13. American Municipal Services collected $1,080.51 for the same period. 278 new cases were opened and 75,624 was levied from the new cases with $3,416.50 collected. There were 28 dismissals for the same period. Charles Gollum made a motion. Kenneth Harris voiced second motion to adjourn until February 1, 2021 at 10:00 AM. Motion carried unanimously.
Any corrections on page?
Yes, Robert.
You can spell it up, please.
No, maybe all one like this. It's a meeting of January 21, I think it probably would be.
It does.
Incorrect, is it not? At the top of page, George.
That was right. That's the minutes from...
2021?
Yeah. It's January. This is February 1 today.
Correct, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
You can go back to the page.
I guess so.
Page 2?
Sorry about that, yes.
Page 3. Now, how does that...
On the reverse auction bid up there? That new Sandy that I bought is a 95. It ain't on there anymore. I went from a 75 to a 95.
I guess I may have misunderstood. We were doing Big Two and went to Big Three on that.
Special docket.
I just put it on.
Yeah, just all okay.
I got one question about these delinquent files at Justice Court. Are all of these, this collection, delinquent or the one that just been collected?
Now, these are delinquent files.
All marred and linked, so the present files are not, those paid are not, okay.
Do you want the 341?
That might be good enough. Fines are actually going to collect here in court.
That's 3,000, whatever dollars. That's the only one to send that. The others are delinquent.
Okay, okay. All right. Make a motion on approval of minutes.
So move.
Suck. All in favor? All right. We need to do the duck. Make a motion for approving the duck.
I'm not approving, I approve the duck.
All in favor?
I approve the duck.
Kevin?
Clerk?
What do you have?
There we go, there's more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You were there.
I was there. Yeah. It's a long line.
I need the Board's approval to a flatboard grant. It's a 100% grant. We're going after the grant institution, Firehouse Subs. I didn't know they offer grants for $23,000, $20,300. Like I said, it's a 100% grant. I just need y'all approval to go to a flatboard.
What's the name of the grant, Kevin?
It's Firehouse Subs. They, they're the ones that owns Firehouse Subway, Subway Chain, I guess.
I make that move. Suck. All in favor?
I need also, for y'all's approval, we're, I'm fixing to purchase a narcotics dog for the Julia and Dixon team on interstate. It costs $4,999. And the guy that we're getting it from wouldn't accept the PO number. We're going to pay for it out of drug seize funds. I just need y'all's permission to write a check to the company that we're buying the dog from.
I didn't understand what you said you'd do.
Buying a drug dog for the addiction team on the interstate. Be paid for out of drug seize funds. I just can't, he won't accept the PO number. He just needs a check to pay for the dog.
Where's he coming from, Kevin?
It's, uh, the dog itself is coming from Atlanta.
Y'all gotta go pick him up?
No, he's going to live, yeah.
Somebody gotta be trained with the dog?
Yes.
Is that extra money there?
It's $1,000 for the training, which is an extremely good deal that I got worked out with the trainer.
They have to go somewhere to do that?
They will go to Smith County or it will come up here. They're probably going to go to Smith County more than he's going to come up here. But it'd be paid for out of drug seize funds also.
You got one person handling the dog?
Yes. Barry Roberts is going to handle the dog. I just need y'all's approval to write a check for the dog because he won't accept to pick up. Either way, it's getting paid out of drug seize.
He's got it.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
The only, no, were we going in here?
I hadn't, I hadn't made my mind up. I thought about it.
You know what happened the last one we had down? Yeah. So I was just curious about it. The reason, you don't spend that much money on a dog. Then you gotta house him and all this. And you know, it's all, that's going to be a continuous going, getting fleas and shots and all that.
I had one for 13 years, I know. But yeah, I haven't made my mind up, you would think, that being on the interstate more so, you probably won't get insurance for all the traffic out there. I hadn't made my mind up yet, I don't know. It depends on how much the insurance is.
Probably not.
I don't know. Not that much.
Well, no, I'll check into it and find out. Excuse me.
My question, Steve, I guess I could look on here. We have got that in C fun, right?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make the motion.
Just a dumb question, Joe. What happens if Barry were to leave the department and you've got that dog with Barry?
The dog belongs to Uton County.
You have to retrain somebody.
If the dog took up with another person, that's what I'm really asking. I thought they were like...
Well, that wouldn't be really an issue because Barry and Will work together on the interstate. Barry would know, I mean, Will would know all the commands for the dogs and he'd be out there working all the time with the dog anyway. It wouldn't be such an issue if you brought someone brand new in. I don't foresee Barry going anywhere. You never know, but he might, but I don't foresee it.
Things happen.
Yeah, exactly right.
When do you need the check?
Uh, today if possible. Sometime this week, hopefully tomorrow.
I doubt it can happen today, but please approve the special docket for there.
Okay.
Can we do that together?
Yeah, I'll add that to my motion for approval.
For the check. For the second. Suck. All in favor?
I need nothing but a check, it's two.
It is two Cajun canines. Let me make sure I got that right here in one second. Cajun country canine, both of them with a K. Yes. We, uh, I did not know this, but I started checking into, I think I talked to y'all before about the inmates, state inmates. I'm trying to get a form. I don't know if we're going to do any good or not. I'm trying to get a form for the state to reimburse us for the cost of state inmates, the medical costs and feeding and food and stuff like that. If we make it happen, if it works, that would be great. I don't know if we can make it happen. I don't know what the state's going to do. We're going to give it a shot. The pump station, we're having issues with it at the jail. Got folks down there working on it now. The trap flooded Thursday and Friday. I think, I talked to him this morning. He said he thought it was the control board. He thinks the pumps are all right. I hope so, because I think that's going to be the major expense if it's not. But we're getting that worked on also. And I didn't have this information in January. I wanted to share it with you. Last year in 2020, the Sheriff's Office had almost 7,000 calls. That's any call that came through requesting deputy, Sheriff's Office, anything, and about 2,500 traffic stops. So I thought that was pretty impressive, especially with COVID. That's about all I got. Y'all got any questions?
On these, on these salary changes on these people, do these people get certifications and projabs and stuff?
Yeah, they all got certified.
Or the reason of moving them?
Yes, yes. They got, we were going to do that again, COVID, but we finally got them all certified at the end of the year around December, I believe. But everyone that got a raise has been certified. That's the reason they got the raise. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Hey, we want you to bring that dog and introduce him to us, man.
I will. He's not a bite dog. He's strict in drugs. Single burp.
He got a mouth, though. Let me tell you that all about it.
But keep waiting, Kevin.
You ready to open the bid, don't you? Call?
One bid.
One bid. Any D-mat?
Farmer?
Any D-mat?
Rob?
Delivered would be $7 per 100. You load, we haul would be $6 per 100. Weight deductions for excessive dirt or garbage.
Your motion?
Make a motion to accept the D-mat bid.
Suck. All in favor?
All right. I got the good one.
That's definitely got nothing else.
Nothing else.
Thank you. JB Anderson Crane?
Yes, sir. Come on in. How y'all doing this morning? Morning, morning. I told y'all last year, I was just filling in as the outside sales guy. Y'all may know Robert from Yankee. He used to work, he retired. I'm now full-time guy. Y'all still making around. I just got enough to pass rounds.
Come on, little dude.
Okay. Oh. Each one of your bids hasn't accounted with us. We don't do a whole lot. I don't think he made the rounds up here as much as I planned to. Every other Thursday, I'll be coming up this way. Each one of the bids, I can stop in, see if y'all need anything. Bring your parts if you need those. We don't charge any kind of delivery fees as long as I bring them.
I know we get cutters from you. And I don't know anything else, but I see you got Tiger Cap, Thigh Boom Mowers?
Yes, sir. We got some new, the TS-6 series, new homes that, they're cabin air tractors. They're putting those on. Probably got six of them sitting out front right now. Don't do a whole lot. Tiger won't let you, Kubota, the new Kubotas, won't let you put Tigers on. Something like warranty.
Still one time in a try.
Yeah. But New Holland, we can do anywhere in state.
Is that a 100 horse tractor?
That was, depends on which, the TS-6 starts at 100. It says 6100 up to 135. And the horsepower is what the other one is.
I got some information here. You must, this is on the Tiger Cap, this Tiger Cap mower. And it's not enough for me to understand. I'm looking for...
What, pardon me?
It's off state contract.
That's on state contract price?
Right.
All right. I'm looking for, if it's on there, I want you to point it out to me. I'm looking for a boom act. And I don't know what Tiger offers. We use Alamo.
Right.
Alamo, did Alamo buy Tiger?
Alamo is their uncle. You look at their website, either they are in the site like Blunk Equipment, which is Bush Hog, Rhino, they're all owned by the same people, but they're all ninty. Now, the Tiger booms, you get a 50 or a 60 on the boom head. They can go up 25 feet as a standard.
I would want 50.
Right.
But I didn't know which one of those, it's got a, does it show it in there what it lists for? It, I do, that's just a printout Steve got me a while ago and I couldn't really find anything in there. We're not going to go into great detail. Like if you're going to be coming by on Thursday, I'd like for you to come by one day and give me a buzz and we'll just talk about it.
Yeah, you got, it's a 60-inch head for the cutter on this one. And I can get all the information, prefer if you want a 50. That's another thing. I don't have the barn addresses to each district. I've got a book with all of your names in it, but I do not have the...
It would probably be better if you go up to Steve's, the cop's murder office, and that can have all our addresses.
They've got all, got the barn numbers, everything.
Okay. And...
To all the mowers, Big Three. Somebody can come out of here.
So it didn't have the price on there?
It's got the price on there, but I didn't understand the, it's just got super duty and 90 inches and all that. Didn't set the price out here.
Now, are you wanting to put this on an existing tractor or...
No, on a tractor, no.
Okay. What do you know about what size was?
I want one that's at least 100 horse with a creeper gear in it and, preferably, you said they couldn't put them on Kubotas? Could light?
That is what they told me. That Kubotas don't, they don't weigh enough now. They like to put the frame a lot on.
You got another choice of tractor besides New Holland?
Not anymore. We used to have International.
Oh, they don't always show up.
Now, you can get any tractor you want. We're doing John Deere tractors for City Gulfport. They're getting tractors from John Deere and having them shipped straight to us and we're putting Tiger mower on. So if you're not a fan, we can still put, as long as it, as the tractor corporation will allow, like Kubota will not.
Okay. That's the first time I've heard.
Did they, when they get rid of the, or get a lot, you know, New Holland, those big tractors, had a lot of trouble. Did they finally get a lot of that worked out?
The TS-6 series, the older one, when they, when they first came out, there was a little problem with the hydraulic. The pumps were aluminum and they were having trouble with that. Well, they changed that, they fixed that. The Kubotas, they're, Kubotas are having problems with the death system. We warranted probably 12 death headers last year on new Kubotas. So they haven't worked that out yet, but New Holland hasn't had any problems with headers.
Yeah, so not 15 or 16.
Right.
Yeah, you probably going to have to, if you contact me, contact me around 7:00 or more.
Okay.
On the phone and we set up time if we need to meet. I can talk to you and tell you what I kind of want, but maybe we can just take up the whole time here.
Okay.
How many years does Yankos stay with, with that company?
23?
And I used to deal with him a lot.
I don't know. Pay his phone.
He, uh, he was actually supposed to retire March, but we were worried about his wife's health, so we went ahead and told him, hey, you want to go home? We'll still pay you to retire. He said, yeah.
Absolutely. Oh, who would?
Good to see you.
Yes, sir.
Good to see you.
I talked to him every morning.
Miss, come here with Miss Alyssa to come on, Miss Alyssa.
How y'all?
Good morning.
How are you?
How y'all?
All right. We are back to see if you guys had an opportunity to talk to Jasper County. We're definitely not trying to push you guys. We're trying to make a decision, but if work, if this is something, an endeavor that we're going to try to jump off and we need to be making a move on some things, I just wanted...
Did they ever call you back, Kenny? You had tried to call one of them the other day when I was here.
I called, I tried to put in a call, registered up and I couldn't get him. I was going to call this morning. I hadn't done, I hadn't talked to him.
And you talked to him?
I talked to him and he said the Board was totally in agreement. They didn't have a problem. I saw him Friday, he was in court with me.
Yeah, like I said, I obviously didn't talk to any of, to the Board, but I did talk to the century and I did talk to the emergency management and the sheriff and as many people that I potentially could, knew of down there just to make sure that we're not going. We're not causing any hard feelings or any issues or things that I could anyways. I'm a person.
Did we, did we possibly like care med to come?
So I'm going to follow him up forward and tell you now. I had every intention of it and honestly, I thought about it this morning on my way up here. And I should have invited them to this meeting. Just failed to do so. They are, I did talk to him after the meeting, told him what was in the contract and that, you know, he said that he would be in agreeance with that, that, you know, either way, the far as the money would be about the same. And some of it, they, you know, obviously want to take on Uton County's gamble on their part because they don't know the exact numbers until they get in there and actually run in the calls to find out. The only thing that we would, you know, if their dispatch took a call, regardless whether they refuse transport on that call or whether they don't, that's a call for us. So that's, that's on them. And if I owned an ambulance service in Uton County or any county for that matter, I'd want them all under one roof and make payments. One of the reasons they do it is because these guys go get, they go get back to bed and they don't have to ride in court when they get a refusal. If I owned an ambulance service in Uton County or any county, I'd stick them all under one roof, hire a manager that says, you're going to be, you know, you've got to get four refusals before you're down for call. Or either you can go haul this one to the hospital, like what you should do to begin with. So that would take, that's more money in their pocket and then we reassure that our people get, get the care they need to. So if at any point in time, these guys can be under one roof, I think that's the best, the best thing to look forward. But what I'm saying is if we dispatch them to a call, we bill them $4.50 per call if their dispatch took a call, regardless whether they transport on that call or whether they don't. transport on that call, or whether they don't.
Only three thousand dollar figure.
That, so we have to come up with something for the very first year to give us an idea, uh, we don't, we don't know the call volume, they don't either. Three thousand dollars would be the initial, first year's, uh, call volume, is what we would go off of, and then after that, uh, uh, after that, we would figure it four dollars and fifty cents per call.
Yeah, after that, did that broke down three thousand dollars per month?
It's actually broke down, uh, I think.
Five hundred a month?
Yes, which would be six thousand, three thousand dollars per truck per year is what it is, they got two trucks. So it'd be six thousand dollars a year. And it's broke down into five hundred dollar payments per month, uh, for, for the first year, and then following thereafter, it's based off the previous year's call volume, which.
So the first year, regardless of the number of calls, based on what you said, would be six thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
And Newton County, that's the form, Kermit.
Correct.
That's not including, they're gonna be paying all the equipment update and everything to get us ready to dispatch.
But the only thing they're not gonna be paying, is my question I had last time. Is your dispatcher, a month, ten days, gonna come and say, Alyssa, we'd like to have a fifty cent of our rate? I mean, let's just be realistic.
It's gonna happen.
It's gonna happen.
It's gonna like, it's probably going to happen, I'm, I wanna push it and see how this year goes, before we talk prices or anything. Their call volume is not gonna justify putting really more of a workload on us. We're figuring maybe four or five calls more a day, that's, that's nothing for us.
The, the benefit, the, the major benefit, even if you didn't charge us, which I'm not promoting it to do that, the major benefit that we have out of, out of us dispatching these guys, we know where five of their trucks are located by dispatchers.
I agree. Now, I, I'm, I'm getting on board a minute more, except for this race.
As far as the race thing, this is what I would recommend to you guys, we signed the other interlocal agreements with the rest of the cities. And we had, I had to honestly come up with a number out of my tail, somehow or another, right? So I, I looked at, and I'm being as honest as I possibly can with you guys. So, I, I looked back over the, the amount of people that we serve, and the municipalities, and we come up with a, a dollar figure, twelve dollars per person per year is what we figured on, except East Central and the city of Hickory, because of their extenuating circumstances with both of those. And we assigned a three-year agreement with those, with those folks. After three years, I think it's only wise for us to look back and say, how many calls did Newton do? How many calls did Decatur do? How many calls? And we look at those numbers based on the, the workload that we're putting on our dispatchers, and the cost of living raises you have given them from the time that we started, three years ago to the present time, and we figure that overall amount of money into that, and divided amongst the agencies across the board, to basically break up some of that cost of, the cost of living raises that y'all are talking about doing. So that way, you know, yes, we're able to give our, we're putting more workload on our dispatchers, but we're basically breaking that cost of living, hiring whatever amount of money that happens to be across the board, in that three-year period, go back and get with Steve, find out how much money we've increased their salary since that point in time, and then let's plus that up across all the agencies across the board, uh, based on their call volumes as well. And that way, yes, we're able to give our dispatchers a little raise, and we're, and the deal is, if they don't want us to dispatch them for any more, then so be it, you know? They're gonna pay, they're gonna pay off the nose paying some, one of their people to do it, at ten dollars for an hour, twenty-four hours a day, so.
You don't have, like, gas plants, or Heidelberg, or, none of those entities have their own ambulances.
They do not.
So, so we're talking about all of the.
All of Jasper County.
And how many residents are in Jasper County?
Just over half of what we got in this state.
I have no idea.
I could look it up and say, we're, you know, twenty-two thousand and five, something like that.
I mean, four fifty per call, I know we're doing three thousand, I'd say five hundred per month. I mean, and that's what, that's over a hundred calls.
It is.
You don't think you got that, but what if we just write it for five hundred dollars? You know, anything over that would be four dollars and fifty cents for the first year, could we not do that?
Do it anywhere we want.
Wait, I don't see it, we're getting overrun.
There, I'm gonna be honest with you, they're getting a deal out of it too. So we get the benefit, they get a deal, we get a deal out of, the deal we get is, we know where those trucks are located. Uh, the deal that they're getting, is there, here's a county right close to them that's gonna dispatch. Yeah, we don't know where everything is in Jasper County, but we do know what some of the stuff is, uh, in that area. Versus them having to pay the dispatcher to sit there for twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a week, they dispatch. Everything else.
We do it, we do it bad, you call.
So seventeen thousand, you look at seventeen thousand, uh, that's what you're looking at for Jasper County. Uh, seventeen thousand sixty-two is what, what census shows on it. What I would say about numbers higher than that, so, there is a, there is a county, uh, south of us, that's on the coast, uh, that dispatches for lifeguard EMS. And they're charging anywhere from four dollars and fifty cents per call to five dollars per call. So, that's another, you know, where I come up with those numbers. I'll tell you what I based ours off of, we're looking at about twenty-five minutes per call, if you look at the average dispatcher, the average dispatcher is about ten dollars per an hour, and you base that off of twenty-five minutes, that's how I come up with the four dollars and fifty cents per call. So, it's based off of the amount of time that you're actually, those dispatchers are actually.
The immediate thing about some of those benefits, like retirement and health insurance too, that they, that we're not figuring into that hourly wage.
Well, that's why I think we need some protection, in case it just goes crazy, which I don't think it does, and they would probably rely on that.
How many, uh, trucks does, does that have in Jasper County?
Uh, two.
Just two?
Yes, sir. And I called, uh, called and talked to their current dispatchers now, because they see those calls that come through. And, uh, they're looking, you know, they said on the average, three to five calls per day, so, that's what we're looking at. And really, that's, those numbers are there.
So are those dispatchers dispatching you everything?
Yes, sir, right now, they're just doing law enforcement. But they receive the call.
Just be doing that, the way I understand it.
They receive the call, right now, they forward, they, they, they pass that call to ASAP Ambulance Service in Laurel, Mississippi, is where their dispatch center said that.
So that, those are going to be affected?
They won't fake them none whatsoever. It's be a different phone number than passing.
If this falls through any equipment that's purchased, who?
It's written in the contract, uh, I wrote in the contract, I didn't have Jason look, but, you know, look through it, obviously goes up to find two calls, but it's actually written in there so that, any equipment that was purchased for the initial startup, which is really no equipment, it's all software, it's all software stuff, um, for the most part. But all of it stays with us for the initial purchase.
It'll be going on our existing equipment.
So basically, what I, what I was, what I'm trying to do, is if you went with six thousand for this first year, you got ten dispatchers up there. If you had to do something forward to the end of the year, you, you would, I mean, if you look at it that way, that, that would cover. I mean, I don't know, I guess you can't say in the future, really hard to figure this thing.
You know, three calls bumping like nannies, you know, they gonna be bumping it every time, three calls a day, yes.
Yeah.
So, the other thing that we, there's a few things I wrote in that contract, that obviously Jason and I hasn't talked a lot about it, was the fact that, uh, for them to have a home, a EOC call, administrator own call number, for twenty-four hour access, if our dispatchers have trouble finding their residents, if they have trouble, if they run out of ambulances, if they do those things, there's some protection that I put in there that basically, we've got a number that our dispatchers can call and say, hey, you're out of trucks, you don't have any trucks right now, and this is administrator. And I put in there that they're responsible for helping us try to find, you know, there's no sense, I, these girls have called me before, and not just with this service. I'm talking about every service since a murder start, since before they folded. These girls and guys down there calling me crying, it's like, I don't know what to do out there, I have no trucks, I can't find a truck, and nobody that'll help me, and that is a horrible situation to be sitting down there, and knowing that there's somebody on the other end of the phone screaming, hollering, squawling, and, and once again, I'm not throwing rocks at any of these, any of these companies, because it's across the board. But it is a horrible spot to be in, I think an administrator somewhere needs to be, to where we can reach down and say, hey, you've got a problem, you know?
At some point, it's not all responsible.
Yeah, you've got a problem, and we need your help, so. And there's some things I wrote in there, as far as that, that I think would benefit us, and I tried to sit back, it's one of those deals, you write it, you stop, and you leave it sit for a while, and you come back and you read it again, and be like, ah, I need to add this back in there, so. Some of that our lawyer may think we might need to take out, I don't know, but I tried to think of everything I possibly could to help cover us, if this is a venture that we're gonna step off into, so.
We ready to move forward? We got a lot to make?
I made some, I mean, I made, uh, Stephen and I made some slight changes to the, to the. And I'll shoot it to you, but he wanted to, to make sure that software was in the, or about the equipment, and, um, of course, this isn't an interlaboral agreement, because they're not a going to be an entity, so I changed that. Also put a indemnity clause in there, just so, you know, they're not trying to, so we're protected legally in case if they screw something up. The other thing I wrote in there, I don't know, was a ninety-day clause, that either party could basically walk away from it with ninety days notice. And I'm guessing that you wanted to leave that in there probably, but, uh, that gives us an out, so worst-case scenario, we start, we do one month, ninety days from now, it's like, hey, this ain't working, this is, you know, it's not working out for us. We write them a letter and say, hey, appreciate the opportunity, but ninety, you know, here's a ninety-day notice, you need to try to find.
It's gonna be in their best interest to do anything they can to keep us happy, because they need to take on employees with benefit packages, and responsibility, and liability, that's how many, and they're, and looking through their eyes, they gonna do everything they can to make sure that we enjoy this ride, I would think, yeah.
The other thing we might look at when we redo it, and of course, you gotta be careful, because we done been there one time, and redoing contracts for ambulance services, but, we could, if we're dispatching for one county, you know, obviously, it's not in our contract to dispatch for hours, but if, that's what we've been relying on, they've been relying on us to do their dispatching for Newton County. At some point in time, renewing a contract, it might be in consideration of, you know, we'll, we'll pay you this amount of money, but, you know, you pay us four dollars or five dollars for whatever happens with these, to dispatch for who they're calling Newton County as well, so. There's a little bit more skin in the game too, for them getting these refusals, that they're getting, you know, it'd be beneficial for them to go on to transport these bases.
It's easier to come down and be able to go up.
That's right, that's true.
So I would say start out a little more than what we're thinking about right here, and I don't, what you basically don't know, then, the unknown, not knowing.
Right.
But it's, it's easier to redo a contract, so, well, we can come down just a little bit heavy and stuff, trying to go up. And I think at the first, in the first beginning, anybody would expect it to be higher.
Right.
And I swear, I don't know for sure, and I, I don't think none of us know for sure if this number's gonna be a valid number, it's four point. Uh. Four fifty.
Four fifty.
Well, I think about it, you think about bike, insurance, everything else, you got to add in for our, the employees, that just, it's, it's not ten dollars an hour, that car.
Well, something like ten dollar an hour, we figured it out, Steve.
Additional twenty-five percent just on the matching, plus insurance.
Yeah, I think so, they cost us about sixteen dollars an hour waiting, on ten dollar an hour pay, so I mean, if you look at. Well, I'm, I'm.
Sixteen dollars down, it's, it's, you know.
I'm, I'm pro-trying to do whatever you want to with it, but I just don't want to. You start off on a short side.
You think they bought, we started off with four seventy-five? Five, five and ten thousand.
Do you think they would bought, I mean, you talked to them, the ambulance service?
I don't, I don't know, I don't answer that. I wish they were here, and I do apologize for not asking them to be here today, on, on that behalf, um.
I know Florida don't sound like a look, though, twelve months, number of calls, Florida's at us. What do you think, Jason? You think, I think they'll jump on it like a.
I didn't tell you, I think they'll, I think they're four seventy-five.
They also gotta take into consideration how much the software update's gonna cost, that we weren't able to get a quote for them, that they're gonna be paying also.
That's one of the reasons I want Florida, and, and I'm not trying to level up on us, because I'm a member of this county, just like you guys are, but I tried to take into consideration that initial startup cost on top of, of course, that's not, they'd have that same problem regardless of what it was with us or somebody else, that they started.
Their own dispatch.
Right, you still got the startup cost, but, uh, I guess I tried to take some of that into consideration, whatever.
How does they pay Jasper County that? I mean, they apparently pay Jasper County to do some of this?
Yes, sir. So, they don't, they do not cover Jasper County right now. ASAP covers Jasper County.
They just gotta be, they're about to storm.
Yeah.
Okay, can you rephrase it? How will they pay Jasper County, or is that all Jasper County?
It's just a, it's just like.
Well, now, but now Kermit started their own dispatch, and they do, didn't they? I mean, this may probably prove with that, they were talking about.
Like we pay the ambulance our subsidy.
I wouldn't consider it a dispatch, they have admin that takes non-emergency calls, transfers.
You do not want, now, what Jasper County does is their own deal. We do not want them dispatching Newton County, period, across the border.
That wasn't what I was going, I was trying to find out if there's, in other words, if we don't do this, is there cost for Kermit in, from Jasper County?
Jasper County's not gonna dispatch for them.
That's the reason, that's what we're having right now.
What, what will happen is.
Do they not dispatch current?
No.
No.
Law or?
Law, ASAP does. It's kinda like, oh, Lauderdale Metro, Metro dispatches metro ambulance, sheriff's office and all that are completely different, whereas we do all third.
ASAP Billy Jones in Jasper current.
Yes.
And they have a dispatch just like we would have Newton and Jasper, from the map. But it, but it's, it's Kermit, I mean, it's ASAP's employees and ASAP's dispatch operators.
Basically, if we don't dispatch Jasper for them, what I see happening is Kermit's gonna have to get their own dispatch, which is gonna be in Oxford, where their administration is, and they'll probably dispatch Newton County with it, because there's no point in giving a dispatch.
Yeah, so we gotta be careful, there's a fine edge to it, and I'm very careful to try to mention there, because if they're, they're making huge investment for one county, then, there's, there's several, there's benefits on both sides, so the fact that we're pushing for regionalization of resources to begin with, this helps us in that respect. It, it's a fine dual-edged sword, because if they, they do start doing their own dispatch, which, they probably, so a dispatch center can.
Does our contract allow them, does our current contract allow them to do that?
I don't know the answer to that, I'll have to read it again.
I know that's losing it, that's why I brought that up, because we don't want that to happen.
We don't want that to happen, their main concern, they get paid with non-emergency transfers. We've butted heads with their admin a few times to keep our trucks in this county for nine-one calls, or, nine-one calls get higher priority than these non-transfers. They lose money that way, but we keep our residents covered the rest of the game, so we do want to.
I guess our own, we gotta decide if we're gonna take the four fifty and six thousand and move forward, or if we wanna tweak on them, I, I don't know. I'm kinda torn, what to do.
Let's do something.
All we do is six for the first year, see if they go to four seventy-five or five next year.
We might need to go to ten next year, who knows?
Can we write the contract that way, that we do the six this year? And in November, we sit down, we look at the real numbers, of course, you ain't gonna have real numbers, because we only gonna be starting in February, so you done lost one month. And if you done it in November, you.
We did a good average.
But you'd have an average for nine months. And then we readjust at that point if we need to. We may throw it back to them.
Yeah, we, I mentioned, yeah, that's a, that's a possibility too, you may.
We just maybe got the ninety days to look at, make sure everything's working. I'm gonna say, if there's anybody who wants to give it up to beat us, it won't be them, because the money we're gonna save.
You're right, you're a hundred percent right.
And once they put this software into our system now, I don't think they'll just be willing to walk away from it, if we win it fifty cents. I mean, that's gonna be the biggest expense, the front expense, so.
If, if you say there's four or five calls a day, you know, if you go up to five dollars, you're looking at seventy-three hundred dollars for next year. That's not a whole lot to.
No, they won't piss fifteen hundred dollars they'll walk.
I would recommend going to five dollars and being done with it.
Go ahead and do it after this year's contract, or next year?
Six thousand this year and five for the next.
Write it in the contract that way?
Yeah.
Because of the initial startup cost, we're gonna.
I think you just be careful.
Next year, we're gonna, we're giving everybody this year. Next year, we're gonna, we're giving everybody this year, next year, you're gonna be five dollars per, per call plus, and then you will have your startup.
With the option for us to look at that for the end of the year, and if we need to go with over five, we sign.
We need to be real careful about giving that for next year, guys, we don't know what's coming in the next eleven months.
So, we're gonna reevaluate. Can we just do it this way, let's do it for the six thousand for the remainder of this year. November, put it in the contract, we're gonna come back and reevaluate, and we will sit down with them at a price at that time per call. I mean, that'd be better than anticipate though, too. I'm like, oh, you know, what's.
We'll feel a bit. And here's, here's the deal, I'm gonna say this, it's not quite that. Well, if you get them in here and we dispatch them for them, you kinda got them.
Yeah.
Understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, so if you put that into contractations. That we'll accept the six thousand for twenty twenty-one, and that November, whatever we decide, we'll reevaluate for next year. Based on call numbers, whatever.
In actual calls to, to Newton County.
Yeah. And then we'll break, then we can break that down by call.
And the best thing to do since then, up here, since I didn't invite them, I wish to. We'll take that contract and give it to them and they can, you know, just this be where, where it is, they can either decide to go with it or not.
When are they starting then? Three weeks.
March, March, I think March three.
Four weeks. I think they're supposed to have the truck down there like middle of this month and starting to get used to it and stuff. Through this, depending on their approval. Is it gonna be, of course, the transfers, the, of course, transfer addresses and all of that, that's gonna be pretty easy.
Why we're gonna have that in our system, we're gonna have, we have the whole map of Newton County jurisdictions, addresses, everything, and planning into it when you call us. We're gonna have the exact same thing for Jasper County.
Except for roads, we counted, count the roads. Same point as them.
Yes, we're gonna need those maps.
Yeah, and the other thing, as far as transferring calls, that's one of the things before I even come here the first time. I went, physically went down there, dialed them online, asked for a transfer, told them what we were doing, asked for a transfer, and then you can make sure all that information that is supposed to transfer over, transferred over. Um, and it did, and she was on the other end and able to verify that the right information come through. So, I feel confident that that information, our biggest thing is getting on the ball and making sure that we get the map there before day one because it is gonna be a nightmare without our mapping GIS software because I don't know, if you told me to go to X, Y, Z road in Jasper County, I wouldn't have a clue. I know where some of the businesses is.
All the two, the other name.
All of those county numbers.
And it'd be a nightmare for, for that information, so.
All right, well, if we get it, since we get that done, I'm gonna make a motion, go with the six thousand for the rest, remainder of twenty twenty-one, and then towards the end of the year, I don't know when we'll need to do it to get.
December is what we're putting in the contract.
Okay, in December, we'll sit down and reevaluate for twenty twenty-two, and come to the price per call at that time.
You going in your contract, December thirty-one or January, February twenty-two?
I second that motion. All in place? Good thing, listen, I have one thing for you, if I could, Jackie Ford, y'all leave. We had a nine-one-one fire call yesterday down on Ridge Road just out from Chucky.
Okay.
Uh, I didn't get to make it, but some of our people did, they come back and said that the, the dispatching was off, they didn't get enough units, different units, different stations. Dispatching time. I think, what is it, she put that?
Red fire structure fire.
Right, that's what it was. And they had the fire, Chucky went first, and they had the fire beat back, and they ran out of water to get away from them, so it was a total loss. So, if you could check on that, too, with dispatching, and we need to always make that happen immediately.
Yes, sir, I would.
I told them I would.
Check on that.
I would address that tonight, let's just. Give me that number again, will you run a tag if I call you?
Uh, our dispatch?
Let me give him the good one, where he ain't got a call be recorded, you know.
It don't matter if they record.
Yeah, I don't give you. It is. Let me get to it. Six three five, four zero nine six. That's not be put in the paper. All right, that's why not. All right, that'll get you in there. That's one of their admin lines. I've only had one last.
Messaging, messaging system is down, but we, uh.
Young guy, anything, yeah, it's really. We present you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hope you have a good one, you tend to be good.
Yeah.
Good.
I do live.
Front end, you been looking at contracts with the changes, looked over them, if you see any more visions, just tinkle with it.
Say the wine.
Thank you, man.
Morning. Morning. What's up, Snazzy? What's up, Snazzy, Jay, there?
Well. Since y'all given my job back this year.
Yeah, you do, it's a good time.
Did we really do this?
Somebody told me. We gotta get that ass pulled down, we gonna look.
Yeah.
Boy, that's true. Hey, we under a kind of drag, wasn't it? I bet you they, I bet you they hate that. I thought, I did think about that that day when I was riding on my.
I thought you was looking at the vehicle when I was.
Oh, really, I'm not trying to.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
They got the honor until we get to.
Are their body company the owner?
My guess is one of them.
Huh?
That's what I'm alleging.
That's what I'm believing. You doing it?
That what you said the other one?
You doing it?
Yeah. They hate, they hate y'all, yeah.
Yeah, you gonna have them all year long.
I don't know what I'm running for, y'all could word that.
You're a highwayman.
No, we get transportation on that.
No, he's a smooth boat. Uh, they don't ask me nothing, they can ask Joe. They, I said, whatever Joe said, he wants to do that road, well, do it. Do it. Ain't the one with the money, do it, whatever he says.
Little person.
Um, you got signs up on that bridge?
I have not yet.
You haven't yet?
Just got them in last week. We're gonna get them up this way and I get your pictures, Steve.
All right. All right, that'll work. Uh. Let's see. On that. Mr. Charles, that guy, Madco project, I think you were satisfied with it when we looked at it, you know.
Free, that's very smooth.
Free.
Michael.
Ma- Michael Hane. That landowner, he called me a couple weeks ago, said it was washed out, you know, it had that little wash in place. So, I got Madco back up there. I got it back up there and probably put rib wrap in it and covered it, topsoil, planted grass. So, then.
I didn't walk in, that's not nothing about it.
Well, that's, that's why you paid me the big bucks. So, you don't have to know nobody.
I like it.
That's what I do, I take care of all that.
Oh, he's whining, he's whining about his business.
So, if you happy with it, then we'll get all these signed by the board president.
Might, or for a file.
Right, same, same new session. You know, I think the board has to vote on it. Even the clerks gotta sign it.
I'm, uh, looking. For fence builders.
Some what?
Where are the fence builders? Yeah, we're just signing off on Madco, right?
On the project?
Project, that, that fence will be part of the project.
Yeah.
That's what I got jumped about today. That name thing, I can figure it out, brother.
Well, that's always a problem.
Yeah, it is, when you bear land.
Yeah.
Even if it was no fence there.
Well, they want. They gonna come by. But you know that's.
Well, I mean.
I would like. It gets on for months. What did you put in there on that thing? See, he asked me, and I thought I would invite him.
Right there where it says. Presidentate.
You doing this challenge?
No, you, uh, worry about the fence.
The fence is part of that, now, before you signed that, the land, before you signed that, that fence is part of this project? Is it not?
Not really. The fence itself? No, it ain't. No, state leaves that up to the supervisor.
Every project I ever done, that's what they done. I think they don't mind now, the contractor put things back. Is that, I, I just believe it?
Uh-uh. I don't think.
Oh, well, good luck, y'all, you and the fence building.
All right.
You good?
I don't think we. Now, they might have put up a temporary fence.
We put the temporary fence up. We done all the fences because you told me, the fence is gonna be on us.
Right.
Except if we got the bridge, the fence on me.
Right.
Let's move forward. All.
Right, which looks like a pretty good fence, where it's at.
A great fence.
Huh?
I'll make that a motion. I'll make that a motion. All in place?
Exactly.
I did, it's a great fence, we could talk about it.
Pretty good fence.
What's that project on?
Uh, LSBP dash fifty-one. Fifty-one, print sees fourteen. Or, as we like to say it, fourteen and a hole.
There you go. Why?
Uh, that's, that's a state aid cream of the product.
That's, that's a state aid language.
That's state aid language, that's, that's really a secret engineering language.
Lifted hanging up.
Been hanging since last year.
Bill, are you gonna go back out there and mark the actual right of way now for the fence?
I showed the land.
Oh?
He's putting his fence up, he gonna put his fence up on that one quarter.
Word, now? On the left side?
On the right side.
Be the west side.
Be the west, northwest side.
The thorn guy?
Yeah.
He, he done got his fence up. It was out there, I come through last morning, his fence.
Well, he done put it up. See, that's where I got Madco, I got a Mac out there and they fixed it. And I, I told him, if you line up that right of way marker, there's another right of way marker. I said, you can line up with that, or you can run right on the top of the hill there, you know, the top of the slope. I said, you can do that. Well, he's talking, done got, he is a, he can do that one.
No, he's, they could put a house, they build a house pad out there every day.
Right.
So, the other road, the other.
On the other side, that right of way marker is there. It's got state on, concrete.
But it's got that offset in it, it's got, it's got a right of way marker with a, that shows that offset?
Yeah, which that, it was just temporary, all that was temporary.
The offset was temporary?
Yeah, that offset.
Okay, so wherever the right of way stake is now on the.
Yeah.
You go from right of way stake to right of way stake, straight shot.
Straight shot. But it's down in the, in the digs kinda, so you, you'll wanna stay up on top of the slope too, I, I would think. You don't have to.
I don't have any idea.
Can't hardly put a fence in the bottom of the ditch, like at other places we looked at.
Where the man went through, he wanted to.
Yeah. Yeah. Like I say, it's pretty nice. Anyway, that's really all I got, maintenance, but you want to, ride maintenance is March second, third. But he see all this virus and stuff going, said, y'all don't wanna ride, said, that's fine with him.
I may have COVID, too, but it's real out.
But now, if you got something you want us to look at.
March second and third? I need to take this down.
Uh. If you, if you got something you want us to look at, so we can write you up.
What about that old bridge down below Chucky? They didn't look at that, just keep on riding.
Below Chucky with, uh, the river bridge?
Yeah, the one I made, the little narrow passage.
We. We probably look at that.
You don't need to advertise that at all. Well, I mean, well, approved, I guess we are.
So far, it's approved, is that it? Yeah, they sent us the thing.
Oh, did they? I never knew that we had approved. Last I heard, we had like the October twenty-eighth, I mean, November twenty-eighth.
Chucky Riverland?
Yeah.
Yeah, they, yeah, they approved that, they said, yeah.
Okay.
What you got? Well, I just, I guess I didn't tell you, I thought, right?
See, I was living in no news.
That's right, that's right. They did send us something, but, but he, he generally looks at stuff that the state has spent money on. So, they ain't spent no money there, so they ain't, that's him.
We, I mean, as long as you get it approved, that's all.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, it's okay.
I got some marks for railroads I gotta do before inspection.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, that.
Where can I get that?
I think I made y'all up.
I.
Uh, I got five, they made me buy five gallons of, I don't think I'm gonna use that bridge.
Hey, it's not so tight.
Okay.
I'll tell you.
I'm saying, you think?
I'll tell you what'd be the best thing to do.
CJ?
This next time.
This is what's making it, is y'all ride around March second and third.
Yeah, but that ain't really nothing to boot.
Oh, okay.
That, all that comes from the railroad, the MDOT. MDOT's got a man that rides around. No, and I talked.
My leveling be done, really, I'd like to get that done before I went down and put those markers down in my stuff.
Yeah.
I don't have to have it for the state aid then.
No.
Okay.
That's not a state aid problem, that's DOT problem, but I talked to the guy, and it's not a big problem. But I tell y'all what, I'm fixing to send in the plans for the reseal. You know, y'all got, three of y'all, or two, let's see, hold on, you got a road, you got two roads, Intermax Smith and Azon, and you got Stratton Road.
Intermax Smith and who?
Intermax Smith and Mount.
Okay, Mount Azon, you said Azon, huh?
Azon, I have a Mount Azon.
Azon.
Mount Azon. I can't even.
You didn't have none, you didn't.
I fixed my bridge, why didn't I get some stairs?
Joe had a road, the reseal project.
State aid one.
State aid money, state aid reseal project, y'all got bridges, y'all two got bridges.
Okay, I fixed that bridge, taking more than the money, and I get to reseal that, correct?
Uh, it's not on this project, not on this project.
And what did I do all that work on it?
Um.
To fix a proper bridge.
You're getting a brand new bridge.
Yeah, brand.
Right, you getting.
I mean, I fixed that bridge, so we don't need that one, and that was.
Well.
I think that was already part of this money.
It's that time with program, we had the programs, in fact, we need to program two more bridges, but just getting off track. Uh, SVP Bridge and a LSBP Bridge.
Well, we got a bridge that they turned down.
You know, that's the craziest thing, 'cause they got a, um. Remember, they got a, a sufficiency rating. It's got to drop below fifty, it's gotta be below fifty before we can program it. So, years ago, it was below fifty, it was like forty something, and we had it programmed. And then after one of them bridge inspections, it got up to fifty, it got over fifty.
About that, double boom, and then two skids went across it, so they just put it below fifty.
They messed it up?
I don't know.
Oh.
I would rather turn them around, they wouldn't turn around. Really? Send that to the law.
Yeah. Well, the bridge is pretty good shape.
Bridge's not enough.
But, uh, I forgot what I was talking about.
We're talking about state aid, huh?
Yeah.
Bridges, rolling bridges. We programmed that bridge in there, and it was an expensive bridge, but now we fixed that bridge.
Well, it's, it's still posted, it's, it's still posted.
Yeah.
And as long as it's posted, then it's, needs to be. It needs to be replaced. You fixed it good enough to open it up.
Didn't you say they gonna put? Did you tell them you ain't leaving on? Didn't you say gonna, what's the weight limit? Thirty?
It's gotta weigh ten, you know, fifteen tons. Thirty thousand pounds.
And you saying we're replacing? After I fixed it?
We ain't doing nothing.
I don't understand.
We programmed that thing to be replaced. Remember last year sometime when I was?
Before we started working on, we done that.
Cause it's closed.
I know.
So we.
Hopefully if I can fix it.
So there was how much allocated there, like four hundred thousand?
Something like that.
I think it was way more than that. There's about four hundred.
Yeah.
Four hundred. J R agreed to.
Plus agreed.
But y'all fixed it, didn't you? Yeah, that's what he said, gonna replace it.
You fixed it enough to open it. But it's still posted. If you don't want, if you wanna leave it like it is, then you can do that. But it's programmed to be replaced. We can leave it, you can just leave it alone.
What, why does it gotta be replaced? Now, hold on, that's a holding place bridge. All the pilots are fixed. Why is it gotta be replaced? Why is it gotta be posted?
Because these people that inspected the bridge, they come out there and they take pictures, just like every other bridge in the county. They take pictures, they write it up. They draw it up, they turn it in to people at low ratings. They low rate the bridge. And they evaluate the bridge. And it's only good for, this thing says fifteen tons. Well, I'm just telling you, that's the way it works.
There's enough deal in that bridge.
I mean, uh. That's the way it works. It may hold. It's like, it may hold a brand new tank.
So that's, that's like.
Won't nobody, you couldn't get the governor to go over and open it up if that bridge people said it.
That's right.
It was unsafe.
That's right.
Open it up, it don't matter. And that's reading it's, it's almost like it is, but it's, it is what it is. Anything that makes sense, we throw it out the window. We go with all the stuff.
You don't have, if you don't wanna replace it, you don't have to. You're still in charge.
But you got some money allocated for it.
The money is allocated to replace the bridge. Now that's.
And you hadn't used any state aid money doing what you're doing. You used all county money.
Right.
And, and they giving it a rating.
They rated it.
It posted at fifteen tons.
Right.
But what you're saying is, is because it's posted, it still doesn't meet state aid requirements. The only way it's gonna meet state aid requirements is to blow the bridge up, knock it down and put a new one.
Right.
Now, he said he doesn't wanna do that. Jackie, I'm doing my random.
Go ahead.
No, you're right.
He said he doesn't wanna do it. What about releasing those funds? That's what Jackie's looking at.
All right.
Now go about the bridge.
Yeah, can't go to a road.
No, you can't put them on a road.
Need another bridge.
But now if you.
I had two more bridges.
If you got another bridge, you'd rather put that money on, then you just leave, what we do is reprogram it so where it's. You take that money and put it, use it for another bridge.
So.
We'll have to, but that one will stay. See, they don't, see, it's got a number. It's got a S A P something seventy-three. But they're not gonna take that number. And use it on another bridge. That, that number has to stay with that bridge.
It's still gonna be right there.
Right there. But we'll have to reprogram.
Inspect it next year and say it's in bad shape. And then you done lost your money. Give it to that bridge.
But what can we ask the dicks? Every year when they re-inspect it, a different person may come. And when they, the one that comes in twenty twenty-one and inspects it, and they see you fixed it, they may take that load, remove it off of it from.
We've already inspected it.
No, 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 I'm talking about the next year.
Next, next go around? The next go around, it could be.
They may take.
But then the inspectors, they'll take the inspection from this year and they'll look at it and they'll, they'll follow it. And they'll say, well.
But, but if they say where the pilot's been fixed.
They've already done that. They've come back and they've.
Some reason you got the low rate.
That's how, yeah, that's how they got the bridge going.
I'm just saying what I'm saying.
They come back, they done.
They were inspectors different.
Oh, yeah. They ain't gonna be much different though. They'll be pretty much the same.
I know the bridge holds over forty thousand pounds. That's what I probably would have done.
Yeah.
I ain't worried about that. I probably.
Right, well, that's, yeah. But when they take their pictures and do all this stuff and they send it in, and the people sitting at a desk, they'll low rate it.
It's there from now.
It's there. That's what we gotta do.
I wish I'd known this for less than a month working on it.
Wow. Wow, I mean, you done, you done great. You got it.
I know, but.
You got it.
They don't wanna replace it again.
No, it's eligible, it's eligible to be replaced. You don't have to. That don't mean you gotta replace it.
Why these jaws, they come in there next year and say, you close it down.
Well, if something else happens to it.
The truth is, he probably couldn't replace that bridge with the money it was allocated.
No, well, I don't think so. Cause that, if that bucket bridge was seven hundred thousand dollars, this would be more than that.
Well.
This bridge is always gonna stop by that company.
Well, well, I, I try to overestimate it a little bit. Cause by the time you get to it, inflation is. You know, I don't wanna program it and not have enough money and still. You know, then you got trouble.
I wouldn't, but I got a bridge every time I. If, what about the one on fellowship? I mean, on H C R fellowship.
It's programmed.
It's programmed.
It's programmed too, same shit. I mean, it's programmed.
That one's got wood, but I think it needs to be replaced.
Right.
I may roll the dice on that, you wouldn't jump.
I would.
Same pot of money?
That's probably.
Yeah. S A P money.
That's not state aid, right?
It's state aid. That's S A P. S A P.
You just gotta do all the work up and send it in, huh?
Right. I started on that one.
I thought you.
Yeah, I started on it, but I ain't had time to. Joe can keep me busy.
Make sure you catch that check they wrote. You catch here, you won't be hurt. All right, y'all getting through bridge sale and I don't.
Well, that's, remember when they? Last year, when they gave us our state aid.
Don't be fussing. I'm in their way.
I mean, y'all got bridges, they got roads. They had to put it somewhere, but if you don't, I'm telling you, you don't have to do that, you can.
We have a bridge.
We don't get enough, I'm gonna just go ahead and say it, leaving that camera right there. We don't get enough state aid money, even how there it is, if you wanna get that down to it.
You're trying for four years, two million dollars, you can spend that in thirty seconds.
That's right.
There it is. I don't think. I don't get that. I tell you, that road, we gotta let these reseals is bad. Local.
That's true. That's not our state aid. Well, it's a little like it. Any, any little bit helps the way I have to look at it, but the way you got it programmed, like, you know, you can't have. You can't get everything you want.
Well, that's, that's true. It's, it's hardly no way to make it fair. I don't know how to make it fair. For Eric.
Well, a bridge is, is what everybody was, and Joe's in pretty good shape with bridges. I'm in pretty good shape. I got one bridge that need replacing. I think Charles is about to hook his, two left. So we made a, a faithful effort to get our bridges up to par. And that's what they were squawking on, so.
Yes, yeah.
So that's what we're gonna have to keep on doing it until they get them. Get, get the ones that we can get.
I don't have the more.
Yeah.
You know, that's pretty good. Three out of five feet. Three out of.
That's one of the last.
And pretty good, Jack. I mean, and they biggest, two of them biggest people in the county.
Well, right.
So, uh. And that's where all the water goes up.
You got, and you still got the Chucky River. I'm, I'm still working on that one.
I got hooked. Little bit satisfied.
Yeah, I think you got.
Time being.
Right.
Time being. I don't know if we're gonna bid a four million dollar bridge go there. Don't make any sense to.
No, two million.
Two forty. He's done made that thing four miles.
Yeah, they. Yeah. They want it higher along. A what?
I'm in water, girl, it's not the other way.
Just need to take the ledge off. What you, what you can just crawl through the water when anything. I put all of that. Oh, many things went in there to do it. Wasn't land on it too. Probably on the first one, I just started digging. You look where I put my. I done that.
Yeah. And, uh.
All right. Any more questions? Mr. Duane?
Let's move.
Look, they wanna move your big ditch, the asphalt.
They're gonna move it bouncing. I mean, I got the Max Smith. I mean, the Mount's line. And they're gonna be done there by Chancellor, Chancellor's store, third way.
It would be if, if it is on the way down.
Yeah.
Yes.
I know.
When they, when they go to Charles.
I know it.
And then they could work out through Charles and they'll be at your house.
But it's a, they wanna get closer to the Apex plant. They wanna get closer to them.
Can't keep that asphalt hot enough.
Yeah, that's what it is. It's the temperature. It cools off too much.
Big winter tomorrow.
Yeah, that'll do it. They talk that mess. You can't tell how it would pay to do that.
Yeah, that's good.
I need to get your man.
All right.
Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you.
All right.
I'm gonna. I'll leave you a copy. I have it all.
Go get your one there, Wayne. Go get your one.
One. Oh. Steve. I'll leave you a copy downstairs, right?
Okay.
Robbie's came to see me right at the meeting. He needs a board order authorizing him as applicant agent on all FEMA grants.
Robert, amen.
Say move.
So they're all in favor of it. They might not.
R I C H D F O N.
I spelled it wrong.
You can't make it up.
That's on FEMA grants?
That's applicant agent on all FEMA grants. Charles Godwin has got a ten or had a ten by twelve portable building and still has assets, uh, one fifty-four, three oh five. He says been disposed of, been passed. So needs to move it from end to end. Don't get that built.
If you speak to enough everybody, you play that with it. Now you're motion. You made a motion. I was actually gonna say that all this time. What you do? Take it off.
There was a building behind that, behind the main building that had fuel tanks in it. Sure would, right up the back door, right there to the right or something, right there.
That listed on there?
That old, wrong and stuff. Yeah. I've been in.
That's it. See? Apologies. Take that off. Whatever we just did, forget it.
It took my brain a minute to crack, but it cracked.
I wasn't gonna say that, but I wondered how you.
I know, but it's got me in that.
How you used all my embarrassed. You took that back, so you got it.
Took it three times.
All right, we need to rescind that or we get.
Thank you, George.
Well, maybe a while, so.
Man, crank. That's bad. Steve, I apologize, man.
No problem. Now, we get off here in a day or two.
State holiday, Monday, February fifteenth, President's Day. Uh, March the seventeenth, which is a Wednesday, there's a regional meeting with Eason for planning and Golden Triangle Planning. The counties that are in both of those districts, that will be in lieu of the midwinter conference. Right now, it's like a half day meeting, but is that right, Ken? Uh, start at like seven that morning. If you wanna go over the night before, you need to let Ashley know so she'll go ahead and make.
Oh, we're gonna. At seven?
Yeah, there's a breakfast that starts at seven and meetings start at eight.
And that day, yeah.
Wednesday, March seventeenth.
Is that the one that happened at Hilton?
Yeah, it's gonna be at the Hilton. So if you want, wanted to stay the night before, let Ashley know. So if you want, wanted to stay the night before, let Ashley know. And then, only other thing I had was direct deposit. I gave everybody that colored sheet. If your guys do not have a bank account, they can provide them with a bank card, which would be use of the Visa or debit card. What I'm asking is that you go ahead and allow any of the employees that want to do direct deposit to do so. We'll need a cancel check and we'll get the process rolling.
So you say we do some, but don't have to.
That's what I'm fixing that. That's great. And the fees look good.
Yeah, if you take that option three, if they use the card strictly as a Visa card, there's really no fees. If they go, you know, to the merchant paid with like a Visa card.
But what's it gonna cost if I do it at my bank? That's not on here.
Uh, it may cost you.
Eight dollars.
Yeah, four dollars.
But the direct deposit doesn't cost anything.
Direct deposit doesn't cost anything.
You get it out. No, my bank ain't charged. I didn't wanna make sure it didn't money, but gonna try to slide in there and get a little.
So if they, if they got a bank account, just need the information, it'll be direct deposit.
We need a cancel check from them so that we can get everything set up.
From that, from that institution.
If they, if they don't have a bank account, you can give them a prepaid card.
If you're wanting to, yeah. We'll need a list of who all wants that.
I think one or two of my guys has got like these, uh, H and R block Emerald cards. Can't that be deposited to them, Ken?
That'd be the same things they do because that'd be the same things that they're talking about on this.
So they're not gonna have a check, Steve, that's really what I'm going to question, they're not gonna have a check from that H and R block account, how can you handle that?
I don't know about that.
Just let them send the check. They ain't gotta go, they won't have to. Without going, it's not gonna be mandated.
I understand.
Okay. But if they did, I understand what you're saying, too.
Yes, they will have a cancel check, what do you say, to get them started?
Take the gift in account, not the wood.
I could say.
They all have routing number.
Routing number in the account.
That's right, that's all you need. But he wants a cancel check, that's probably the best way to have it. A voided check or something.
I don't have a problem with doing it, it won't affect me, but don't you think the employees ought to have opportunity to say if they want it or not?
That's what this is.
Well, it's not.
There's not all or none now. If you want it, you get it, you don't, you don't.
All my folks want it.
Yeah, we've, we've had some of your guys come by wanting to know why we hadn't started over here.
No, we just don't bother with the cases, man. Our check right there. We need to make a motion on that, or just something to do?
I make a motion, we offer to all employees, the employees that want to accept it, move forward with it.
Sure.
All in favor? Does that include the payroll, these payroll cards? If, if they don't have a bank account?
What I'm gonna do is tell my guys, come up here and y'all explain it to them, if they won't move forward with it, get at it. If they don't, get at it. Write them a check and they come up again, gather them.
Get their money with me.
Get it with y'all, that's what I'm talking about. Y'all can bring it to us. If that's what I love.
Sometime.
For a fee.
So in, in that motion, I need you to choose option three.
I'll put that in there, George, it's option three.
Cause I think that's the best one on there.
See a lot of free there.
Option three is, uh, at least a signature.
I'll listen to what they say.
See, you don't gain nothing to do with it.
Lose, lose a little more of your money.
Well, if you do the free, I mean, do the card, you lose a little bit, but if you get it direct deposit, it doesn't cost a thing.
Definitely will hit the bank the day before, knowing you paid, paid, and you can check your account. Cause you gotta have something to know that it was deposit, but should be able to go online and do that.
So it's like you can't do it once you have, hey, I take this check, the house take a picture of it.
Now, the only thing that, that I see we're gonna have to question was, are they gonna be able to find out how many hours they got sick, leave, vacation, is that something?
I think she's still gonna print that out.
Still gonna have.
She gonna get an envelope saying that it was a deposit.
It's not gonna say before, or what, and all that.
Don't cost you more.
Oh, yeah, the payroll staff gonna have to do.
A stove.
A stove because of.
All of your D ducks.
You gonna have.
So you gotta have.
Vacation.
It's easier and it's faster.
Remember that.
There'll be another, we'll have to hire another worker up there by the end of the year. All right, we made a motion for this?
Yeah.
And we done, it's, it's, uh, and we voted on, all right, got it for us, well, that's all I got. You got anything left, Ken? You got anything?
No, sir.
I, I need to do, Steve, you hit me out here to advertise, I guess, specs for a, yeah. For a, uh, used John Decker tractor with Alamo Boomax.
Used tractor.
I'm sorry, yeah, since we're doing reverse auction, it might be, my hands are following now. Twenty eighteen or newer. Less than six hundred and twenty hours.
Well, I figured you want that.
I'll get to the specs, Steve.
You can't do that, but I need that car. I need to get more than one.
I'm looking for more.
I don't do.
No, I didn't say that.
I said one of them.
One of them, one of them.
Yeah, I may buy this and even if he wanted another.
Is that all you got?
Yeah, yeah.
I do have one question for you. Does anybody know where Scott Smith is?
Yes, he's on, uh, Chucky exit on Interstate over there cleaning up the yard with the Joey Tootin' at this one. Yeah, we do that all the time.
Does any, does anybody know where he's going after this?
I need to back up, and it's gonna hit Kenny out. I got the thinking after our last meeting. My husband Kenny vice president this year, and me and Charles gonna have to back into this thing back for next year or whatever. So if the board don't have a problem with it, I need to be vice president for next year, I move vice president.
That's what I tried to tell you.
Well, it ain't cost you two months of stamping, you gonna lose a whole year and everybody's stamping. But I got the thinking about it.
You were here to help stamp, what's the deal coming in late?
No worries. Instead of him being vice president this year, I'll be vice president for the rest of the year, then next year I move president, you'll be vice president, we'll get back on track. Doing it the way we're doing it now, I'll have to be president and his backup be vice president, just like he had to do, it's gonna keep us off from now on.
No, you did clear back in the next.
So, okay, then, I don't have to stand one year, we'll live like it is, I like how you think, Ken. So I was just saying, I just, I'll be vice president for the rest of twenty twenty-one, so resign, I'll be.
You won't let somebody nominate you?
Hey, I just never gonna be one.
Oh, but I mean, you and Charles will be next year.
I'll be president and he will be vice president.
Next year he'll be president, you be vice president.
No, yes, back it.
Then you go back to where it comes. I know it would be backwards, but.
Same, like I said, it don't matter. I ain't never gonna be one ever again, all that though. I don't like sitting right over here. But, I mean, to get us back on track, I, I'm willing to do it, if you don't want to do it, or Kenny can keep it, and I'll just be president for one year and be gone. That's probably my best bet.
Give caution.
Well, I mean.
You have to do a resignation.
He did that, he's gonna have to resign and then go through the nomination process and.
Yep. Or like I said, Kenny just won't keep it, he can keep it, and next year I'll just be president, I'll never have to live that. As long as I'm happy.
That's what I mean.
They did me.
But I ain't gonna think. I'll do it.
We'll have to do some.
I, I'll, I'll stay here.
You gonna stay here, you gonna stay vice president?
Yeah, I'll stay vice president.
Good, all right, that's good.
Thank you, Ken.
We might not nominate you next year, don't get, don't get excited.
Don't wish it. I'll be excited if you don't.
All right, is it my turn?
It is.
All right, Hickory on their garbage feed. Their truck is in the shop, just won't know anything they can do to help them out in a short period of time.
Fix some old deep pockets in their home.
They got some, and they're showing that their trips are from three sixty-five to two seventy, well, two forty, two seventy-three, two ninety-two. Areas are four forty-two, but. No, that was, I looked, that was decent as well, so, so, and the twenty-ninth was three forty-nine.
I was after, thank you, what that right there was.
Yeah.
That's a normal household?
No, that's a tonage.
Well, actually, I love that one, but according to what we was told by our people last month, I don't know if we can take on anything else, we just, good job. I don't know, I ain't got one of them.
How, what were the tons again?
Two forty-five to four forty-two per week. So the average is gonna be about three more or something.
What you saying, two hundred and forty-five?
No, two four forty.
Well, we got on that six hundred and something last time, too.
But we said four, four tons.
Yeah, two to four tons.
Did we, did we ever nail down the number of household? Two hundred and something?
Yeah, he had it in there. I was just doing what I was asking to do. He said they, they down and just looking for any help they might could get.
They need a truck?
Truck's in the shop.
Oh, I said, do they need a truck? Is that what you're asking?
No, well, I mean. Would we consider doing it for thirty days, furnish a truck and a driver and them have the chumpers?
I'm just asking, I don't know.
I, I just said for thirty days.
Oh, wouldn't you, I pray. President, he's lost his life, he's dead, dude. Basically, do it to achieve. The little one he plays. I'm like, uh, my thought is, they're county citizens just like we are, you know. If, if there's something we can do to help them, I mean, I don't have a problem trying to help them for a while.
You're, how you gonna do it?
I don't know, I don't know.
I never thought about a driver to make furnished, chum.
I don't think they got enough employees to battle chum.
Well, that, they got a couple, but I mean, that's all.
Garbage up, they got somebody doing it. Maybe later, I don't know.
And just charge them by the day?
For our truck, our driver?
Let them pay, let them pay for trash, landfill? How would we do that, Steve, Jason? That'd be a contract, I guess that'd be a contract with.
It depends on what, what you place on the bill, I mean, I'm assuming they have employees that do this.
Huh?
So we just needed to lend them a truck. If we got a truck, I don't, I don't have any idea.
Well, what you'd have to do is let one of our drivers and a truck go down there on Friday. I guess, that's on the, well, not, like, the Wednesday, the fifteenth, that's when the truck was going in there.
Our boys are off that Monday, so they already gonna be working that track. See, that's what I was talking about last time with up here, when you got a holiday road and there's gonna change the whole thing.
Yeah, but you can get a truck after two o'clock. And, uh.
Man, I get a driver, but you get a truck.
But they got a driver, don't they?
They do.
You gonna pay them overtime?
No, no, they're, they're driving. We talking about letting them borrow a truck now.
Oh, God, I ain't gonna tell.
I'm not fixing to tell, I ain't fixing to tell Marty in, in Richard, we fixing to loan out no truck.
Have any of them one-ton trucks left around here?
No, five of those are left.
About three years, here's a big four.
Yeah, you had it.
Well, for a simple fix for them, that'd be as, as simple or quicker fix as you could do.
Without a truck.
Go the way of a tanker, have one ton, truck or a ton and a half.
Yeah, well, one ton or a, a trailer or something, they'll, or a quick fix. I mean, you trying, thinking about trying to, we ain't got ours fixed, how we gonna fix theirs? So, I mean, I'm just trying like you said, try to give them some thought of what to do, you could get a gooseneck trailer.
Don't they have a gooseneck?
They said a one-ton trailer, but I think the old truck is down, the one-ton truck is down. I'm not a hundred percent. But they did mention that.
I know they got some work done on one of their trucks over here at.
They said tracks blow something.
Yeah, they had it worked on over here at, um, Rickaway, yeah, low and down.
Why are we on, why are we on this? I'd like to see Scott, see about his rotation, when he gonna get back into rotating us? Counties, or if he's even working in the counties. You said he would jump, you asked.
That's what Joey told me.
I saw, I saw him leaving out his morning with the trailer. Look at us, me and Charles, God, we're on the same page right here. I don't know how you make the paperwork work out. I don't work on a trailer, what's wrong with him, he'll just swing it through Hickory every day on their way to landfill, getting finished off their trailer, pick it up by Hickory. There, to landfill. To help them out.
What now?
Let Scott, his people go through Hickory every day on their way to landfill, get them a load on their trailer there. Is anything wrong with that, Steve? Ain't with that.
You gonna be paying to dispose the garbage?
No, they pay, they'll pay for the disposal, he's gonna get it over.
Every garbage stacked up pretty high, Hickory.
Well, forget my idea, let it.
No, I'll be fine.
I'm just saying, if we're looking to helping them people out, that's a truck or a van and a truck, just gonna go to landfill every day. When you pick up this road, if you got room for another fifty, sixty bags, run by there, pitch them in there. I mean, would that work?
I think you gonna have to.
People gotta know when they gonna have to take it out.
Yeah.
That's immediate, exactly.
If you set it out two, four, four days long, it's supposed to be alive, be all loaded.
Okay, hold on, but everyone needs to let go of their little truck and make three rounds, and get, they put, they put about nine hundred pounds on that truck. You would have to make, you would have to make about two, three rounds, just a, a day every week decide that he takes the fruit and down there, pick up the garbage, get to the landfill and get to pay for the trash.
And we do it for thirty days.
How about you go charging?
What's our base rate?
Said last time, the base rate wasn't covering our expenses.
Twelve dollars a month right now.
I covered that if you.
Thirteen dollars a month right now.
Fifteen dollars.
That'd be any kind of putting it in the middle. With what George.
Yeah, I'm not saying, I'm not saying let's start taking that on full-time without more information, I'm saying let's do it thirty days.
Get your truck.
Thirty days to get your truck out of shot.
Of course, it's gonna make him mad, he gotta go down there and then always haul the trash back for, but. I wanna see it. Huh? I, I, I wanna see this. Well, I'm just saying, we're gonna try to have, okay, forget it, it's not a good idea.
Yeah, I'll pick up.
It's a good idea, but I wanna see it.
That what I'm saying?
It hasn't happened yet.
Four weeks.
You have four weeks to do it. Like you go on, when, what day do they, you pick up down there now, Jack? Wind, you Hickory.
I can't, the county comes on wind, I think they do on Thursday, they do something.
I don't know what that.
This, this wind is it there.
Hey, you gonna have a truck to pull a gooseneck trailer, there's nothing wrong with a gooseneck trailer, let one of your guys drive and take junk, get throw it on that trailer layers.
It probably gonna be a thing to unload it.
Well, they have to unload it if they go to clearly.
Well, they have a dump truck, I mean, they have a dumpster, didn't. Well, what I'm saying is use the hell out of it.
That's what I'm talking about.
What I'm saying is use the anyways, and throw it right here in this thing, Charles, it's Hickory, when they go across the thing, throw it right in there, go back and get another one. And like I said, it may be a charitable idea, maybe I shouldn't even have brought it up, but I'm trying, you, you.
They only have the haul two or three tons on that trailer, man.
About a ton and a half.
You be lucky.
Volume-wise, you can't get that, and I love it, too.
But you might get a ton of it, that's right, that's about, what, ten, eleven foot long, six feet wide.
Twelve feet long and six feet wide.
I guess you have more volume than weight there.
Yeah.
Yep, and how many inmates does Scott have?
Last time he was in my district, I think they was free walking around out there. And like I said, it may be a terrible idea, I'm trying to get Hickory, I'm trying to keep Marty in there for men jammed up, I don't know, just forget it, maybe we just do something later. But they already, he's already on the payroll, so we be our fuel. If they pay for the trash, we can just tell them, hey, you give us what we fair, two thousand dollars for this month, and we'll get your trash done once a week. That's all they pay his salary or pay what our part of his salary is, well, we know that we be our fuel, so we have to do something more than that. I don't, I don't know, y'all tell them.
Can Hickory get your ants and stuff, it's easier if we can't, ain't that a city? I mean, I'm just asking, you get vehicles, buy all state contract price, get another vehicle? I mean, how long does it take to get a, a ton truck fixed?
I don't think they're trying to fix a ton, I think they're trying to fast the garbage truck back, I guess. I don't really know the whole answer to that, so to be honest with you.
Obviously, I'm at Pacman, got some used models, man, they got used.
Everybody's wearing them bears up now, that's what I tell them, track chassis, chassis, ain't no scrap iron when you get through with them. I ain't done thought about that, I tell you, use the scrap iron, bro, but I'm not sure everybody else is doing the same thing, they smart, y'all. All right, me and Charles just go eat, help him, Jackie.
I don't, I didn't, you know, I tell them what we thought about, see what they can do, but, you know, I'm, I'm sure they in a.
Big book.
They ain't like everybody is, just trying to make the best of what they get.
They're willing, right?
The key is, is gonna be Scott. Potentially do it, it need to talk to him. Or you just say do it.
You don't need to talk to him.
Well, President. My thing, I'll talk to him, I ain't. If we gonna do it, they gonna need to pick it up in two days, that's my thing, two to three days. I mean, if we gonna do it, we just gotta, what, what price we gonna charge for him? For, nowhere for our truck and trailer and his, his time, the inmates, and that's on the house.
They gonna, they gonna have to do some maneuver with their days, if it's gonna like that, but never knows, Scott.
Are they gonna fix the amount of garbage we had taken to the camp? Are they gonna add another daddy, or they gonna do anything with two or three tons?
I'm just throwing this out, Richard said it's gonna, it costs fifty-five dollars a ton to carry the garbage.
Yeah, we know that, but I'm talking about, is it gonna add another truck load?
That's what I'm saying, they make.
I would tell us.
Four tons was a max.
Yeah, two and four.
No.
Six thousand, eight thousand pounds. But I won't have another load, but it may, maybe I have, maybe I start off on Monday with a little extra the next week, every week, I mean, that's.
If I could, I would say that's semi-table this, but you talk to Marty first and then talk to whoever else you need to talk to and come back to us. See what you think about what he thinks.
He ain't gonna make four, the trash handling, he pick up.
He's picking up, yeah, exactly.
I'm sure he is, I don't know what you're doing.
Well, they, Marty, you can keep with him this afternoon, holler back out if you need to vote, and we can figure out something to do. We're not gonna settle. We're not gonna settle over here.
I don't know how to put you on the spot. Is any way you could send a dump truck and a driver, let them do the same thing, too, we get a chance to talk to everybody?
No, I couldn't.
At least that'd get it.
That little eight-ton truck would probably, eight-yard truck would never let a little yard come down.
You might have, you might have to make two, but I mean, the little trucks would be the way to do it. It's shorter, it'd be easier to get it over there.
They got a dump trailer that works. That's, that's your best option right there. You can dump it. Wouldn't that gonna load it by hand?
Goose neck, uh, they don't have a way. I ain't got a way to pull it. I'm dumping it.
He's sitting waiting on it.
That's right. Alright, we gonna tell them that and I'll talk to them soon. We can work that. You got anything else?
Would, uh, somebody, or you, or somebody find out about where, the where Scott's at, when, when he's gonna get back on route, or are we gonna use him, or what?
You with that, that's how I would make a move through.
I was like, no.
Steve, did that guy recall you that, you know?
This is a conservative man.
Oh, yeah, what about our system?
Called this morning, tried to talk to him, and I hadn't heard of running.
Why don't we just get Mark Massey up here to look at this? Let's talk, let's buy a new unit.
What we got is good, Charles. We just need some units though.
Well, gift to you, it's one of them.
Well, I think they're on order. I think they're back ordered, is the problem.
I like y'all. It's, it's terrible for the people to make the decision, cause they haven't come in here. Hey.
Alright, oh.
Joey said you got a chuckle today picking up trash?
Ask them where you going to the next time.
Alright, where are you going when y'all get through with that? What, what meter you going in through there? Alright, when you get through with it, where are you going? I, what it is, y'all was wondering when you coming back in meet three, so you can figure out where you going.
I just wanna know. You know what I could do.
Alright, he'll be thinking of, uh, before he need you to go. Alright.
If they take you to the island. I'm gonna do it.
Okay.
Kenny, I noticed.
Okay.
Out back. Where they ended up cutting the concrete with the grout that is caving in. Get the back end toward the sewer hole.
He said...
It might just be so official, but it should be there. It may be some more where else it's going down in that hole.
Okay, about to drive around through wood.
He said that Joey told him to stay down there, take it on for a ramps and all, but, uh, and what it is, somebody went down there, I know what happened. Somebody went down there and told, burnt down a fish camp. If you went through there, it'd be seven, eight loads.
Yep, you know what?
Shouldn't that be in that?
No, but, but, no, it's on...
That's where the hole was.
It's, it's, no worries. Stay that, stay, it's here, it starts and goes up, change it, that's the road.
From the...
What I told, what he showed me today was actually on the long rail. And it's been a mess, so I don't know.
Yeah, it's terrible. I don't know.
Why are we doing M doc, John?
Don't this supposed to be a state highway?
I don't, I don't know, but anyhow, he should call you by Wednesday and have your road picked out. He'll be ready to go.
I thought the next one that we were doing, the next man and truck and trailer was the M doc.
Well, will you, will you pick it up today then for V two, even though it's in V five? I'm telling you, you know it. Send the mess scattered against a kingdom of dog.
I've seen that intersection, if that's what you're talking about. I wasn't proud of it.
Pick the parts up down there, tell them burnt down a fish camp and they clean the car, and now they sit there along with cleaning cars. And then when it gets in, and I'm telling you, it looks worse than the landfill.
Yes, sir. I felt we there and I probably won't. Or where the exit, so that's where all the trucks and carts spend nights or something, I don't understand.
There in the Walmart parking lot?
Yeah.
Yeah, the Walmart truck stop?
Yeah.
Alright, anything else?
They were asking twenty twenty-one. Did you get a motion?
No.
So moved.
Anything else?
And then Charles, exactly.
All that thing.